Good evening, welcome to City Council Meeting, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five at six P M. Hey, we have roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa Junior.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Villegas.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yeah.
And Mayor Julian.
Here, yeah, we have a quorum. Will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic, which is ours, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is a moment of silence, moment of thanks, appreciation, condolences. Is there anybody that wishes to address that? Okay. We went right along, agenda review. I'll start from my left. You okay with agenda?
Yeah.
On the right side, I'd like to move item eleven to item ten, human resources to ten, and then recreation to eleven. Is that okay? Steph? Okay. The next item is community participation. I have one individual that wishes to speak. Deborah.
Okay, regarding the recent code compliance awareness efforts by Chiefs Cash. I speak for those in our city who appreciate Chief Cass's transparency to help residents avoid unnecessary costs for the city and for themselves. It's unfortunate that some residents have used this as a platform to criticize management, claiming citations are issued only to earn income for the city. They don't understand that the cost of issuing, processing, and retrieving fines is greater than any benefit the city of Guadalupe receives. He's not here, but I'm gonna tell him, keep up the good work. There are many citizens who have good things to say. Regarding the street sweepers, how many times does the street, okay, the Public Works Department does a good job and are aware of the and considerate of people and objects in their past. When my husband is walking our dog, the street sweeper driver will stop the sweeper until they pass so they do not get sprayed with trash dirt and dust while walking. I challenge those who believe street sweepers don't do a good job to see what's in the sweeper bins at the end of one day. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, I don't see any other hands up there. Ceremonial calendar. We're skipping A and we'll go to B, Hispanic Heritage Month. Councilmember Hernandez will read that.
Where areas the city of Guadalupe recognizes and honors the contributions of all members of our community. And where areas the Observation of Hispanic Heritage Week started in nineteen sixty-eight under President Lyndon Johnson. And was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover a thirty-day period, starting on September fifteenth and ending on October fifteenth. It was enacted into law on August seventeenth, nineteen eighty-eight. And where areas September fifteenth is the anniversary of independence for five Latin American countries. Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. And on September sixteenth, Mexico achieved independence. And on September eighteenth, Chile achieved independence. And where areas Hispanic Americans bring a rich cultural heritage representing many countries, ethnicities, and religious traditions. Which contribute to America's future. And where areas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, the United States celebrated the culture and traditions. Of Spanish-speaking residents who traced their roots to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Caribbean. And where areas throughout the history of the United States, members of the Hispanic community. Have helped shape the social, political, and economic landscape of this country and our community. And where areas the city of Guadalupe invites all members of the community to celebrate twenty twenty-five Hispanic Heritage Month. Now therefore be resolved by the virtue of the mayor on behalf of the city council. Recognize September fifteenth to October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Christina. Given Guadalupe is about eighty percent Latino Hispanic, I think it's a tribute to those hard-working individuals, not only here but everywhere. So, thank you for reading that. The next item is consent calendar. The following items are presented for the city council approval without and without discussion as a single agenda item. Is there a council person who wishes to pull an item for detailed discussion?
I'd like to pull items, see the minutes.
Okay, C. Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
May make a motion to approve the remaining of the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. All eyes. Ms. Villegas.
Yes. On, on the minutes on page, page three item, it was item ten. Where there was quite a bit of discussion about the Oversight Committee. And there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of pros and cons as to how the oversight function should be formed. And I have always said that I approve and support an oversight function of sort. And I was the opposing vote on the ultimate motion, which was to have a full committee which would fall under the Brown Act and would create additional work for staff. Particularly admin with agendas and scheduling meetings and things like that. And I think it's important when there's a sensitive topic, and I perceive this topic to be sensitive, that if there's an opposing vote, that there'd be comments made as to not just made, but in the minutes. And it doesn't have to be an essay or anything, but a line or two. That would explain why there was a no vote. So I would ask that, because I pulled this, I would ask that comments now be made in the minutes to be written for this current meeting and that those minutes reflect that I had suggested the option of going with two council members and dealing with city staff, city administrator, finance director, city engineer to create an initial oversight function. And if that function didn't provide the transparency that council wanted or the community wanted, then to bring it back to council and discuss it further. So if at all possible, I would like those comments made in these minutes. And I also want to say that I'm pleased to see that there is more narrative in the minutes. So that's great. Thanks.
Any questions about what she wanted to add? Judy, you can get that? Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the amended minutes?
I'll make a motion. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, no, they're not amended. She asked that they, that her comments be included in the minutes for this meeting.
For me, that's amended, but okay.
Okay, well, I just, there was no amendment to these minutes. That's all I was trying to clarify.
There's addition to these minutes and?
The ones that are gonna be voted on next meeting.
Right. Okay.
That's what I understood. Councilmember Villegas, you didn't want to amend the minutes for last meeting, correct?
I wanted to add my comments, yes.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood. I thought you said these minutes, meaning this meeting. My apologies. So they are amended.
Yeah, the motion I was gonna make, and you tell me if this is correct, I just want to approve the item seven C with comments made at this meeting.
I see. I was confused. I apologize.
Okay.
The emotion that?
That was a motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of we discuss an item C, please say, are they all ayes? The motion, what is, motion please. We have the motion, we have the second. Vote. Okay.
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, thank you. Must be the, must be the thunder. All right, the next item is management report, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On November eleventh, it's the first meeting in November. It's actually Veterans Day, it's a holiday. So I guess the staff had requested that that day not be a council meeting. And instead, if you want a special meeting, maybe November fifth or somewhere in there, or if you just wanna waive it for that month. I'm suggesting that because it's a holiday, you waive it because staff might not be around.
Well, what's the?
What's the wish of the council, otherwise we'll, you know?
I, if there's not pressing business, I would say waive it. Yeah.
Yes.
A good consensus?
Is there anything scheduled for November eleventh?
Not really that far out that we're specific at this point.
Great, and I'd say waive it.
Christina, you good? We got a majority, so that's good.
Thanks. And then also, I wanted to let you know that the G C A C, the nonprofit, is receiving donations for beautification at the Mayor's House. And separately, also, we received a donation for the Royal Theater today. So I'm gonna share that with you.
Good. How many million?
We don't have to worry about anything, no.
Okay, good.
So that concludes my?
That's great.
My report.
By the way, the, you know, the beautification committee and their generating resources goes to the G C A C. And it's separated in terms of the money coming in so that we're, it's being accounted for for the beautification side of things, so. And since it's a nonprofit, people can write that off for donations. Okay, anything else, Todd, you good?
Yeah, I'm good. There's a lot going on, but you know.
Who's covering the Director of Public Safety? Is he on Zoom?
He's not on Zoom. Okay, he's just has his stats within here, so.
Maybe we should mention this. Amelia, do you wanna mention that, I know you're gonna talk about?
The, the dinner?
Yes.
Yeah, at the Elks last Wednesday was Law Enforcement Appreciation Night. And our employee that was recognized was Joanna Mendosa, who is the records clerk in our police department. And it was a well-attended dinner.
Yes, it was.
And the food was good. Yeah.
It's always, it's always a nice presentation, so. And thank you, Joanna, for doing what you do. All right, nobody for fire? Okay, Human Resources Manager, Sylvia?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Community. Who's here? Under recruitment, we are, have the position of building attendant open. We do have some interviews this week, so I'm hoping they go well. Like I said before, there's been multiple candidates. I've screened a lot of them. Most of them are not quite interested in the instability of the hours, so that's kind of what we're up against. Or they're not bilingual, so that's a little bit of a negative. So hopefully the candidates we have coming in this week, we can get that one wrapped up. For Public Works, we do have one position still open for wastewater operator two. Originally had one, and then we had the resignation, so that one is still open. We did have a new hire join us at the beginning of September. He is getting acclimated with the supervisor and getting up to speed. Think he'll be a great addition. Under benefits, we are in the middle of open enrollment. The employees have until October tenth to make any changes. Enroll or whatever they wanna do, that would be effective for the first of January. I did have Calpers scheduled to come out here to do a little health fair for the employees, and they canceled two days before, saying that they were overwhelmed with requests. But it is what it is. I think because we're a smaller city, it's kind of hard to get them out here. Luckily, there was not any changes that were significant. There were, there was a couple that were very, very minor. However, the rates did go up significantly again, two years in a row. And you can see that I, they range from four percent all the way up to thirteen and a half. So that was the change. I am working on a wellness, health and wellness fair for the other providers, which would be the dental, vision, life, retirement, and affleck, and hopefully that'll get done in the next month. For workers comp, we did have one injury last month. He did acquire treatment. And he's working in modified duty along with another employee who is still on modified duty. And fortunately, we're able to accommodate both of them. Working with our Public Works Director to schedule a driver safety training for all city employees. I think it's important that, especially for employee safety, to get that kind of a refresher course and make sure they understand the responsibility when driving city vehicles. So hopefully we can get that done in the next couple of months.
So who does that?
J P I A.
Okay.
Yeah, they have it. So that'll be included in our our fees that we already pay. And that is online.
Okay.
And then the mandatory anti-harassment training for all new employees that have been recently hired, that'll be done in October as well. And then this month, or last month, I believe, sorry, we recognized Isaiah Sribas from the Finance Department for the quarterly recognition program. And we had pizza. Did anybody show, Amelia showed up, right, for pizza? Yeah.
Food will do it.
Yeah, pizza does it. Yeah. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Sure, please.
Sylvia, just a couple of quick questions.
Yes.
On dental, vision, and life, were there any changes in carriers? Or the same?
We don't have any information yet. Last year, I didn't get it till mid-October, I believe.
Is open enrollment in November?
Yeah.
There in November?
Yeah, it's not till November. Yeah.
And on the anti-harassment training, is it possible for me to attend?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll send you the invite. I'll send it to everybody just in case anybody wants to. Super fun. It's a really good trainer, so.
Thanks. Oh, is that J P I A? Is it Kelly?
No, it's a gentleman. I forget his name, but he's fun.
Okay, thank you. Any question, any further questions? We'll go to item eleven, Recreation Services Manager, Mr. Navarro.
Good evening, City Council and public.
Yeah.
So, for the month of August, our auditorium gym use is up from this month of last year. O'Connell usage is down. Liberty Park usage is up. Senior Center usage is down. As well as the council chambers is up, and Veterans Halls is down. As far as the minutes from the September meeting, we unfortunately didn't have enough members for a quorum. But we are scheduled for this upcoming meeting, and all of the commissioners have confirmed they will attend. Kind of review of what we, some events we just passed, the Fiestas Patrias wasn't a city event, but we our department attended, we passed out many Mexican flags, as well as flyers for upcoming events. We just hosted our September edition of movie night, where we showed Cantinflas. That was a nice change of pace, and there was one of our community members who's attended the meeting here, Virginia Navarro, you might remember she was here for the Day of Hope. She had a great story where she's just laying us know that she used to watch Cantinflas at the Royal Theater, and she actually met her husband there. That's very cute. This upcoming Friday, we have our September edition of Poetry Jam at the Veterans Hall. That will be from six-thirty to eight P M. Hope to see y'all there. As well as we have an upcoming community hike on October fourth at eleven A M. at Guadalupe Beach. We also have a Guadaween coming up in October, which we all hope to see everybody attend. It'll be here at the City Hall. Touchstone Lowriders will be there, we'll have some food trucks, a whole mess of resource booths, and some fun games given out. And as well as we have, starting on October fifteenth, we're gonna have a community of frienda here in City Hall, in the glass cases. We're really encouraging people from all ethnicities to engage and share a photo or trinket of a loved one who's passed, and it'll be safely secured in the glass case. As well as we have a Dieter des Muertos event happening November first at the Guadalupe Cemetery. With live music, some vendors, and as well as some crafts. And not, we also like to add is our October edition of the movie night will be October seventeenth. As well, it'll be Friday night at six-thirty in the City Auditorium. That's what I got.
Okay, I have some questions, but let's, go ahead.
What was my first question? Oh, have we reached out to the community to see if we are gonna fill that commissioner position that's open? That might be a question for you or you. I mean, are we, any, any feedback on that?
I've reached out to a few members just to get a feel for it. I haven't had any strong indications that they're interested. But I've put it out there multiple times.
I wonder if we can post something like we did similar to the most recent posting you made for the? Yeah, yeah, something like that to get to the community, post on the Facebook pages, maybe say that they do get paid a little bit. So, you know, that might entice some folks.
Yep. There was an email that came by for a gentleman that was interested about a month ago. So I'll get with Sylvia. We'll get on that.
Jane, anything?
Yeah, on the Halloween. Are we gonna close off right here for the cars and all that, or where are the cars gonna be staged from Touchstone Style?
So I'll, we'll be closing off Tenth Street from the corner to the Police Department gate. And that will be where all the Touchstone will be lined up there.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay.
Good question. Go ahead. Anything else on that? About the, what do we do with restrooms and stuff? Where are they gonna, this hall is gonna be open? Is it, what's going on in the auditorium itself?
Oh, let me give you an overview of what Guadaween is gonna be. So we're gonna have out front, we'll, I'm gonna get with staff and try to we're gonna block off the parking. I mean, we'll have some parking during the day for staff, of course, it's a Friday. But during the event, it'll be blocked off. We'll have the old granny fire truck out there, and we'll have the food trucks out front. Really, I don't want parking out front just to, because it kind of splits the building and kind of, I wanna keep it open so people feel they could kind of travel back and forth. Off of Tenth, like I mentioned, will be the Touchstone for the trunk-or-treat. Inside, in our auditorium, will be resource booths. They'll, I've asked each of them to require, to provide either a carnival-style game or a fun craft to do with the attendees. As well as we have a costume contest. We have three categories. We have a twelve and under, twelve to eighteen, and eighteen and above. Each individual category is eligible for a fifty-dollar cash prize, provided graciously by Route One. And then outside in our courtyard, we'll have a giant slide for, you know, giant slide needs.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited about all the upcoming events. They seem really exciting. Dia de los Muertos is a cemetery. I look forward to honoring some of my family there. Puerto Frenda como tarea. When can individuals drop off a photo? Is it anytime?
So it officially begins on October fifteenth. Prior to that, you could come by, people could, my contact of my office is on there. Or people could come by the Parks and Rec office, drop off their photo if they'd like. Or anytime during, it will be running from October fifteenth to November second. So anytime in between that, if people like to participate, please do.
Is that nine of five? What are the hours here?
Yeah, about nine to three P M.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then an additional question, the five K, are those T-shirts available? I forgot to inquire.
Yes, yes. All T-shirts are available at the Parks and Rec office during regular hours. We have a whole list of names.
Perfect, thank you.
A quick question. Those pictures will be placed where, did you say?
In the glass case.
Oh, in the lobby?
Yes.
Okay.
I had a question on the hike. You know, it says, it says one, two to three miles. Is that one way or two ways?
Round trip. But it really just depends on the community. If somebody says they wanna, two miles is too long, we'll turn it back around.
Okay, well, you know from history that some people don't realize how tough it is to walk on sand. And then, you know, they complain about it. So if they're well-informed that it's tough, if you're not used to walking on sand. But if you go three miles, you're all the way up to Muscle, the top of Muscle Rock, so good. It's round trips.
The first hike that I led, I actually was really surprised. I had, I think, six individuals over the age of fifty-five. But we didn't go, well, we were thinking we were gonna go really, I was thinking a younger crowd, you know, maybe some students. But I didn't have any, any students, and they were really ready. I think I had an individual there that was about seventy-five, eighty. And we don't go towards Muscle Rock. We do go in the back, where the sand is a little more compact, and it is not too difficult.
All right, cool. Very good. It's interesting, Dia de los Muertos, they're at the cemetery. It's that cemetery, right?
Correct. It really is inspiring. I'm not sure if anybody's driven past the San Maria Cemetery, or at least the new site. The Dia de los Muertos over there is going on, man. It is so cool. So just kind of getting inspired off of that. I'd like to kind of hopefully bring some of that magic over here. And I, Guadalupe Cemetery being so diverse. I really hope and encourage people from all ethnicities from the community to come out and share a story. And that's really what it's about. We're gonna have some live music for the first hour, but the second hour, we wanna focus on storytelling of those who pass and keeping their memory alive.
I think it's a good, you know, a lot, a lot of people are afraid of cemeteries. It should be the opposite. You know, there's, there's good spirits, should be good spirits there.
Definitely.
And Victor's a good, a good guitarist, so. Any further questions from Mr. Navarro? And Victor's a good uh, a good guitarist, so, any further questions from uh Mister Navarro? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to regular uh, regular business, uh proclamation emergency regarding supervi- supervi- supervisory. Control and data acquisition. I know this Phil, but I know that uh it's gonna be tag teamed on it.
Yes, we'll let David start.
Okay, please.
Alright, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh residents, um so, um what? The supervisory control and data acquisition system is, is it's a um electronic system that allows for data collection. Um remote control, monitoring of pumps, tanks, the treatment process um that we use here in the city. Um so what happened that caused an emergency is the beginning of August, we had a partial system failure, meaning. Um the software integration that uh the data is related to has failed. Um and it has left us pretty much limping along, um. So there's a whole bunch of I T talk involved in this, um and pretty much what happens is the tongue, the tanks and pumps. All send in data to relays um to a computer system, the computer system then relays it to a software program. And it allows you to read the data, um so it allows you to monitor water pressures, water flows. How much uh chloramines are being processed into the treatment process, um and it's all a, able to be done by a computer. Um with this system, if it fails, um this all becomes a manual system, so we fall back to. You know, traditional math, um manual operation of the system. And uh as it states in the report, um SCADA is a system that is used by nearly all water systems. And wastewater systems within the state of California, um probably nationwide as well. Because it's, it's, it allows you to gain all the measurable data that the state water boards need and want. Um it's kinda essentially, you can think of it as your proof that you are meeting um regulations and requirements throughout the state. So we um called the company, they came out to troubleshoot it. In doing so, they discovered that what they have or what we have on site cannot be fixed. Um so the only um available option is to replace. Um and it's, is the whole system replacement, it's not just uh the software. Um so uh these things that are called P L Cs, which is essentially the circuit boards that all the data is being transferred to. Um have to be replaced, um it's all the original software and computing system from when it was originally installed almost twenty years ago. Um so there is no, um. What we have cannot be modified to fit current standards or current um technology, right? So it gives us the only option to uh replace. Um now what we did do is we got everything down to the bare bones necessities. Um with a system that would still allow us to upgrade in the future, um so we can upgrade different monitoring systems and. Um things like that along the way, um but this is essentially the cost of the bare bones concept. Not the top of the line, um but it gives us the opportunity to grow to the top of the line. Um and with this company here, they gave us a seventeen week uh completion timeframe uh upon approval. And then um. I mean, essentially, the rest is lawyer speak that Philip can provide you with. Yeah, and and it's budgeted, uh well, it's not, it's not budgeted, um this was definitely not budgeted. But we do have the reserves to cover this, and we do have some um leftover funding that I will try to. Acquire from the tank recoding project, and that might cover about half.
Phil, you got the?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, members of the council. I may have to ask, oh, excuse me, I may have to ask David to uh fill in some, some blanks here. This, because this is an installation of new equipment, not just a, a repair. Uh it qualifies as a, what's called a public project, and under our code. Uh and state law, we have to do competitive bidding for public projects. Due to the cost of this, there's a, an informal and there's a formal process under our code and state law. The informal is a lot easier, but it still takes time. Time that uh Mister Trejo said that we really don't have, and I'll, I'll let him explain why we don't have the time. But be- because we don't have the time to go through the competitive bidding process. Uh fortunately, the Public Contracts Code and our municipal code allows us to uh. Basically procure this as an emergency project, it's pretty formal, it's not gonna go into detail. I spell it out in the staff report, um you, you were required to adopt into resol- a resolution. Uh basically a proclamation of an emergency that you've done this before, when we had the COVID nineteen situation. And when we had the weather, so you've done these proclamations before. Uh this is obviously not a serious emergency or as widespread as, as those were, but it's the same principle. Uh you declare the emergency, it needs a four-fifth vote, so if uh more than one of you votes no, this isn't gonna happen. And we'll have to do competitive bidding. And. That's basically it for me, the only other wrinkle here is every council meeting hereafter until the quote-unquote emergency is. Declared uh to be over, you'll have to have a report on this. I'm looking into whether the emergency can be essentially over after you act tonight and. The contractor gets going on this because there's really nothing else to do, the emergency is basically that it could fail at any time. Uh and like I said, I'll let David say a few words about that. Um and we just don't have the time because of the, the nature of the, the work that needs to be done, the, the lack of. Available contractors that can do it and um, that's it.
Yeah, so we, we don't have a way to measure when the system will fail again. Um it could be right now, it could be four months from now, uh there's just really no way. Um we, and the reason is, we can't see what the system is doing, so we, we can't. We can't tell what the flow rate is, we can't tell what the injection rate is, we, we are, we're like walking around blind.
Like mine, yeah.
So um. That's where we are, um we, we know that we're providing safe water right now. Um because we are verifying everything manually, um however, we don't have. I guess the automated way to know that, yes, this, this much of this chloramine has been injected, this is what our water flows are. Is this tank running more often than it should be, like, we don't, we don't have that data, everything is, is hard. Man-hour data, so, and just like everything else, everything is subject to failure, um the people, the data. Um so that's, that's where we're at.
Where is this physically located in?
It is at the three oh three site.
Okay. Any uh discussions or questions, please?
Um does it look like you guys got two quotes from two different companies on the same exact thing, is that right?
Correct, it was a one-for-one quote.
And then one is two fourteen and one is two oh nine?
Right.
Have you chosen which company, did I gather that, that you chose one company over the other?
The uh, the, the staff report or the resolution provides that you delegate that to the staff.
So you're delegating that to the staff?
Yeah, because we weren't able to, I mean, he, we, I don't know, we weren't able to for, for sure say that we had hired a contractor. In time to prepare the report, I think there is a preference and I'll let David speak of that, I just wanted to let you know that. If you take the action tonight, uh you're delegating the decision which company to hire to David.
If we delegate that decision, I mean, I'm not trying to get in on that decision, I just wanna make sure that I understand how the decision's being made, is it being made um? Solely on cost, or is there a grading system that you're going between the two possible uh companies?
So both companies are offering the exact same service. Um and we believe they're being subcontracted, the programming of the system to the same exact person. So the same exact result will be provided.
So going like low cost?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, that makes sense, I just wanna make sure that that, there, I mean, that's what the plan was.
I, I just wanted to clarify, the reason why I didn't wanna say, if, if we go with the low cost and then I've had it happen. We've had it happen where they come back and say, oh, well, we, we need to, we didn't realize something, we need to negotiate a higher rate. So we're, we're not committing to them just yet until we uh work out all the bugs.
No, I, I just wanted to see, I mean, cause if we're not competing it, you know, um. Over, you know, like the Royal Theater or something like that, you are at least looking at those from an apples-to-apples point of view and just making sure what the, the point was on that. So um that's my only question.
Any questions of Phil or David? Is there a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-three?
A motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa Junior?
Aye.
Council Fornaz? Councilmember F- Jiegas?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Julie.
I don't know. Aye, we need it, thank you, David and Phil. The resolution passes. Next item, the future agenda items. But do you have anything they wanna add?
Can I ask the status of the uh Farmers Market M O U?
Did you hear that, Phil?
Farmer, what is the status of the Farmers Market M O U?
Thank, thank you, uh Councilwoman Jiegas, uh it should be ready this next coming meeting, it was almost ready, but. Uh the M O U was prepared, the draft was prepared a little too late, and the G B, the Guadalupe Business Association wanted some time to take a look at it. So it'll be ready, uh I, I assume, uh it will be ready uh to, for the next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
They had a fundraising event this past Sunday at the social club, which was a pretty nice turnout. Anybody else wanna add, any question?
With the Guadalupe trick-or-treating, we're gonna have food trucks. What about our food truck regulations? Should get that maybe.
It's funny you should mention that. Our uh Director of Planning, um contract, no, I guess our, our contractor, uh Larry Apple. Wherever he's at, on the East Coast enjoying the fall, he's in Maine, no, I think he's heading to Maine, he's in New Hampshire, I don't know, he's enjoying the fall colors over there. He's been sending some emails about food truck uh ordinance that he's been working on, he's very excited and he's moving forward on that. Um so we are definitely moving forward on that, and we will also include. Um sidewalk vending with it, so that we just cover it all in one. I can't give you a timeline, cause you know, he's, he's back east and enjoying himself, but we are working on it, he has uh kind of a draft, I think.
I'm hoping we can move the, the Route One uh community benefit fee up in.
Funny you should mention that.
Okay, good.
Todd and I have a meeting on Friday to kick that off. We've already, uh, we've already discussed it in theory with H D L, who is the contractor we use for this stuff.
Wonderful.
And they're on board, so we are gonna be moving it forward.
Okay, I just think it's been several months.
It has been.
And they have apparently donated stuff for our Halloween party, so, right, is that right? So I mean, I'd like to, you know, help them out.
You're, you're right, we, we realize that, we had to clear the, the decks on a couple of things, but we're ready to focus on that now.
Yeah, they also donated to beautification, so, yeah, they're. Yeah, both of the companies are supporting, the, the manufacturing is also supporting, you know, they did the cleanup.
Yes, yeah, the cleanup.
But I'll, I'll wait on that, so is there uh any other future agenda items? David?
Um Mister Mayor, uh just to give you guys a little bit of an update with uh the City Hall project. Uh we met with uh Ravat and Albright uh today. Um and it looks like maybe the end of October, we might have something to kinda present to you guys, uh with some options. And ideas that, that have been, that have came from that, and then um another thing is the driver's training. Will be for anybody who may drive a city vehicle, so that includes all of you, beautiful people as well. Um and then the other thing would be um an update with the speed bumps in Pasadena. Um I found a source that could probably get us um some speed bumps and talking with uh Jeff, the engineer. Uh we kinda came up with an idea of some locations to remove, um as some areas to focus on primarily just around the school. Uh but they will be more, um I mean, they're not any lower, but they're more um spread out. So it'll be more of a, a smooth transition.
I think it, it should be known that you're working on, the city's working on it, we hear what people are saying and trying to do the best we can based on. The short timeframe we had to look at the school opening and how do we manage that, so thanks for doing that. Anybody else on future agenda items, if not, go to fourteen announcements, council activity reports, we'll start from the right, anything? Gene, how's the volleyball tournament, did you see, did you go to it? The volley, you didn't go to it? Okay. Okay. Okay, good, well, that was last Wednesday, I was wondering, anybody go to it, okay, how'd it go? Okay. We bet, I bet that there was, so. Who, who played? How'd they do? How'd they do, the uh? That's alright, it's a new gym. Wow, no, that's great, how about the attendance? Was it packed? Is there a, is there a cafeteria there, is there a concession? Better work on that food truck thing there. Yeah, that's true. Right, right. Do you know what's going on, or maybe, uh, um, Mission Navarro's in terms of basketball and stuff like that, are they gonna have their regular ev- events over there?
Yeah, they should be using their gym now.
That's great, you're gonna get a lot of people there, I think, uh, then we're gonna have the dance there, right? No, no, no dancing, no dancing, no high heels over there. Or socks. There you go, sock hops. Yeah, you have to let people know what that means, though.
What is it, what does it?
Christina?
Um I attended Fiesta Patrias as well as Cuchacha Marcus Farmers Market, it was a great turnout, thank you to all their volunteers. On that initiative, really appreciate that for our community, also wanted to share about the Indigenous Youth Leadership Institution of Arts and Culture Celebration Exhibit. They have an art exhibit for their indigenous youth, uh this Thursday, five thirty to eight, and the community is invited. Um special gathering there.
And that's at the garden, which is next to Malde Nando Center, right?
Yes, next to the garden, um in front of the Malde Novel Center, and they're gonna have the young artists that have their art experience, um art exhibit there. So really great event to support, um also just wanna mention that September is Suicide Prevention Month. Every life matters and every conversation counts, whether you're struggling, supporting someone who is, or learning how to recognize the signs. You are not alone, talking about suicide can save lives, unfortunately, I have lost over five, uh four family members. In the last three years to suicide, and it never gets easy, and so there is a twenty-four-seven crisis and access line. Eight eight eight, eight six eight, sixteen forty-nine, thank you.
I also attended the uh parade on September fourteenth and the Law Enforcement Appreciation Dinner. Also went to the Farmers Market fundraiser, it was extremely hot and humid, but uh bought some good brittle. Um also wanna mention that September is National Library Card Month, so for those of you who don't have library cards, go get them, they're free. Whether you live here or not.
Anything, I have a couple items, uh one, uh last uh nine eleven, which is last Thursday. I think we met with Caltrans to look at how we can uh move on getting Flower Street from Pasadena. Open to where people can uh can enter and exit from that point, to relieve some of that pressure. can enter and exit from that point, to relieve some of that pressure, so. I know that Hallie, uh was it Hallie that was there? Yes, they uh, it was a good turn, it was a good turnout. Uh you had the developer there, you had their their consultant there, you had city staff there and trying to open up that area so that people can use that as an exit point, so. That's happening, it's not, it's not dead in the water, so that's happening. Then uh on uh nine fifteen, we had a Guadalupe beautification effort. We had a meeting at the the senior center where there was a list of items that the, that the, we brainstormed what needed to be cleaned up. And there's probably about fifteen different things that needed to be cleaned up and thanks to the city staff for uh going uh ahead of that to to clean up things, just like the two monuments that we have being painted and cleaned up. Um and there's also some effort, I saw on Facebook, some, some of the, well, the Amiga family, they were cleaned up uh some of that uh curb weeds, it's an addition to the cemetery, so. I I think that that's, I hope it's catching on to where people start cleaning up their place. Uh the American Legion uh Post uh three seventy-one, they will have an open house on October eleventh at the Veterans Building, that's at twelve o'clock. Uh what the, the, the reason behind that is to let people know that they're moving forward on opening up the, you know, the center to uh all veterans and to the residents of Guadalupe, so that's, it's a free uh free lunch, but they're, they wanna hear what the the community needs in a way of of veteran services and they wanna bring back those that left the the post in the past to come back to this. There was thirty-one members prior to the new leadership, now there's fifty-three members, so people are are starting to come back. Um Santa Barbara County Association of Government that met last Thursday. Um just to highlight, uh State Route One, that's right here from, from Highway One to uh the bridge, spring of twenty twenty-eight is a pavement, uh pavement uh work. Route um, the Santa Maria River Bridge replacement, that's fall of twenty twenty-five. That's, that's gonna happen. You see all these Caltrans folks painting and measuring things, uh surveying things, Route One since one sixty-six to one uh river, river bridge, there's ADA uh pedestrian infrastructure that's gonna happen. And that's also fall of twenty twenty-five, so this can be really busy uh that time of the year, or that in the next year and a half. Route one sixty-six pavement and curb ramps and between one sixty-six and one, all the way to Santa Maria, so there'll be, that'll have, that'll be the summer of twenty twenty-six. Uh maybe set back. That'll also include the, from the railroad tracks and that, the work that's gonna be done to Flower Street and all the way to Santa Maria. And uh by the way, all this information is available on the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments S B CAG. So if there's information that people need to find what's going on in Guadalupe or in the whole county, they report every month. Uh Caltrans reports all of the activities around uh Santa Barbara County and it, there's tons of there's all, there's a lot of money being spent on the roads, so. That's all I had. Is there um uh motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Always. Thank you all.